Oh, did I put it in? I meant to put it in my pocket.
They got $200,000 on our government's bill. They can spend all of that. They can spend all their infrastructure for the time being. So, but...
I was feeling that song at the same time.
He, uh, I got it. It's here, that's all we talked about. Well, then consequently, we won't do that. Well, we asked them to give us credit. I don't know what to say.
They're saving on nearly $200,000 for the government bill. And they can't spend.
I am fine. I put a call in for Rick today.
Is it on the other side? Oh, good, alright.
Nothing real personal.
Which means, which means the country had to stop. Or pretty much, nicer bus stop. That's the only thing they can spend on. It's not, it's not, it's not. But I'm just, I'm just breaking it down.
No, I don't see that.
But I'm telling you, that's how certain I am.
I bet. They tell me that they know. And they said, okay. Well, he said, he said, he said, he said. We'll, we'll get to, yeah, I'll do my...
I didn't know that.
He said, for, for Vita and his sake.
Hey, how are you?
Oh. But he's like, oh, it's just, it's just...
In using that term.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Okay. Uh, nobody signed up for this item, so I think since we've had a motion, we have a second on the table. We've had discussion. We'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, it's defeated four to one. Thank you, counsel. Moving on. Okay. Uh, on, on this next item, uh, we all know that this is, this is something that, what this, what this is tonight is this is housekeeping. Uh, I call this meeting because we had to have it, uh, in order to have this on the ballot. Uh, this question that is about to come up. And so although, um, I was going to say that if we had two hundred people here, maybe we would, uh, lower the, uh, uh, speaking to about two minutes instead of three. But since there's only one, two, three, four, five people gonna speak on this item, I think we'll go back to the original, uh, three. Three minutes, and, uh, if you wanna extend that a little bit, that's fine. Okay? So with that said, we're going on to item three, which is consider the approval of ordinance number two oh one six dash oh two dash oh two. Calling a special election for May seventh, two thousand sixteen, to consider a proposal to decide whether VIA will continue in the city of Castle Hills, and if VIA is discontinued, to consider a, um, proposition to decide whether the city of Castle Hills Municipal District, the Development District, will be created for the purpose of financing development projects beneficial to the district, to be funded by one half of one percent sales tax. Diane, would you please explain this item, please?
Mr. Mayor, I was hoping you were gonna say that in Spanish also.
Uh, I would have, but I didn't wanna show off.
Mayor and City Council. Mayor Howell called a special council meeting tonight because according to the Texas Transportation Code, section four five one dot six oh seven, under election, an election to withdraw from an authority ordered under this subchapter must be held on the first applicable uniform election date occurring after the expiration of ninety days after the date the governing body orders the election. If we waited until next Tuesday, we would be past the ninety days. The sole purpose of this meeting is to formalize the calling of the vote for VIA on Saturday, May seventh, two thousand and sixteen. This is not a town hall meeting tonight. There will be a town hall meeting scheduled in March with plenty of advance notice. That is the time that residents will hear from VIA and can express their views on this all-important vote. I know there's a lot of information floating around out there, especially on social media. The city will provide information via our website and Facebook page as time progresses. Mayor Howell?
Thank you very much. Um, we'll get a motion in a second on the table before we go into the discussion. Do I have a motion, please? Okay, in a second? Do we have a motion in a second? Before we go into the discussion, I wanted to let you know, uh, probably that, and, and I feel this is important. This is, this is an issue that a lot of people are, are, uh, involved in, uh, emotionally. It doesn't look like many people are here, but there's a hundred and ninety-six people viewing us right now. Okay, so I guess they couldn't be here, or they didn't wanna be here, or they're stuck in traffic, or whatever it is. But there are people who, who are very concerned about this. So with that said, excuse me? Well, they're probably pulled over the side of the road. Unless they're in Castle Hills, and then they don't have to do that. Uh, Leslie, would you, uh, like to comment on this, uh, housecleaning effort?
Actually, I think we've commented quite a bit on it in the past, so I don't have anything to add beyond what I've said before. But I would hope that if we're going to have a town hall meeting, um, we would send postcards to people because the last one, we didn't, and people don't know about it. And also, as I've stated before, um, when we're doing something like this, we do have an obligation to send something by mail to inform people. A lot of people here aren't on the internet and don't have, aren't on Facebook. And, you know, that's not the way they get their information. So it, you know, since we're doing this, we should definitely send, not, not a position paper, which we can't do, but simply the information.
I like that idea. In fact, maybe when we get to the end of the discussion, you could add an amendment to the, uh, thing, if you don't mind. Matt, did you have any comments or questions regarding the item on the table? Thank you. Mr. Mr. Squire? Did you have a, uh, comment or question for the item on the table, please?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Paul, did you have a question or comment on the item on the table, please? Thank you. Douglas, go ahead.
I wanna, I'd like to change the verbiage of this. On the third line, it says, "An ordinance calling a special election to be held in the city of Castle Hills, Texas, to consider a proposition of the question of continuing VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority in the city of Castle Hills." I'd like to change that to discontinuing because further along, you say, "And consider a proposition authorizing the creation of the city of Castle Hills Municipal Development District." If VIA Metropolitan is discontinued in the city of Castle Hills. This makes this ballot very simple. You either vote yes for both or no for both. Some people are gonna go in there and vote maybe yes for one and no for the other, and, and they may be confused. So I think the first ordinance ought to be consistent, both saying discontinuing. And that means Proposition One should be rewritten to say discontinued. That allows people to be consistent in their vote, and it lessens confusion.
Is that an amendment?
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, hang, hang on, folks.
Mayor, point of order.
Hold on, hold on.
Real quick, on, on Proposition One, we've already, that's already been submitted. Uh, it's my understanding that, that cannot be changed at this point. Mr. Brennan?
Who's it been submitted to?
Uh, the state law tells you exactly the words that have to be used to, to call a vote. And this is the word, the words right out of the statute. So you can change it if you want, but then you're gonna have an invalid proposition on the ballot. That bottom part down there with the asterisk, which is sort of explanatory, that's not state wording. But both of these, uh, propositions are precisely worded the way the state statutes are worded. And they may be a little confusing. But, uh, the bottom part, uh, you know, we craft, or I crafted, uh, to fit the city of Castle Hills election. But the top two, the propositions can't be changed if you want them to be considered a valid proposition.
They can't change it to discontinued on Proposition One, to be consistent with Proposition Two.
You, you can't do that because, you know, the law is, you've got, it, the law prescribes the, the precise words you have to use, and you can't change that.
Thank you, Mr. Squire, for your, did you say that?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. In a real-world sense, it's weird wording.
Did you get that on the, uh, point of order? Thanks. Did you wanna withdraw your, uh?
On the recommendation of the state attorney, saying that this has to be written this way according to state law, uh, remove my motion.
And you wanna, okay, good, all right. Okay, with that said,
Is that, is that, I just, the question I would have is, is, is that the way it was? I don't have it with me tonight, but I believe that the way Douglas is reading it is the way that it was written in Hollywood Park.
Well, I don't know, I'm just, if you look at section, uh, four fifty-one point six oh seven of the transportation and code, it says, uh, "An election to withdraw from an authority must be held on the first applicable uniform election date occurring after the expiration of ninety days after the date the governing body orders the election. At the election, the ballot shall be printed to provide for voting for or against the proposition." Quote, "Shall the," and you put in the name of the authority, which in this case is VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority, uh, "be continued in," and then you put in the name of the, the city, which is the city of Castle Hills. So it doesn't say, you can say, can it be discontinued?
Mr. Brennan, I know that, and again, referring to the fact that we also are not allowed by state law, if you're just reading the, the letters, to say that we should have, um, any alternates on the zoning commission. You took issue with that, so here we are.
Leslie, can we stick to the item, please?
I'm just using an example, I'm just using an example.
I totally understand, let's stick to the issue.
And so I'm asking, because we did go up and ask this question, um, and I did talk to people in the Department of Transportation, and what they claimed they were doing, and that's why I'm asking, did you talk to them? That this is simply an example of a way to say it. It doesn't say that you can't say discontinued.
I don't know, it says shall be printed.
Did you talk to them? That's my question.
No, no, I, I didn't just, I, I read the law, I copied the law, and that's what you have here. I didn't talk to them.
That's enough. Uh, did you wanna make an amendment to change that and run it across for counsel, or did you wanna go ahead and move forward?
No, it was Douglas's amendment.
Thank you very much. Okay, would you mind, uh, bringing your, uh, amendment forward on, uh, sending out the postcards? See what counsel has to think about that.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to move that we, we send, uh, postcards to everybody in the city, um, for the March, um, town hall meeting, and also, um, at the appropriate time, um, mail an information sheet about the two ballot propositions to everybody.
Can, I mean, just to be specific, can we send out the notice, uh, with, with it on there so we don't send two mailings?
Well, one of them would be a postcard, and the other one would have to be a sheet.
Right, but I mean, couldn't we just put it on the sheet, uh, with eight hundred dollars?
I guess you could, but one of them, one of them is for March. I guess you could do it all together.
Okay, I'm just asking. Anyway, we have a motion?
Mayor, can I make a, ask a question? That's a, that's the mechanics of, of, of how you're gonna handle the process between the ordering of the election and the election. And I, I sure would recommend not muddying up the calling of the election with details about when we're gonna send cards and when we're gonna send letters, and I don't know who's gonna prepare those and all.
Diane, let's do this. Uh, Mr. Brennan's probably right on that. Let's go ahead, and I think I'm authorized to spend eight hundred bucks. So let's, uh, go ahead and make sure that we get postcards, uh, sent out for this. And, uh, uh, so, so the town hall meeting, so they'll know that it's, that it's coming. Is that okay? Thanks. Okay. We have a, uh, we had an item up under item three, which is consider the approval of, uh, this election. We have a motion, we have a second. We're gonna do a roll call vote on this.
We have people to speak.
You're exactly right. We do have speakers, so we're gonna hold off on the... Thank you, John. Sorry. First one on the list is Sylvia Gonzalez.
Sylvia Gonzalez, one oh three Wickford Way. I'm just gonna speak, I guess, on West Avenue where the buses go because that's really what we are discussing here. And, um, what I did is I went out there to observe the buses that came down. And two of them went north without any drop-offs or pickup. And then one went south, no drop-offs or pickups. Then I waited a little longer, and then there was one guy that was picked up going north. And then, um, there was a bus stopped in front of Burger King, there in front of HEB. And I spoke with the bus driver, and he told me, well, yeah, that's pretty empty, no drop-offs or pickup. But it is busy, he said, between four and six. And the most that he's ever seen is three people. And then I asked him, well, I noticed all the other bus stops, you know, north of HEB to Lock Hill Selma, I didn't see anyone. He says, well, mostly the pickups and drop, you know, are there in front of HEB and Burger King. It's what he told me. Now, I know we need money for our streets and drainage, and that's okay. We can either keep or do away with VIA. But I think that a lot of people are misinformed about all the details. So I think it's great to do send some information out, you know, so that we can get everything straight. Because if you talk to someone who wants to keep VIA, they always say, oh, because of this and this, you know, the businesses needed this. The ones that wanna do away with it say, oh, we're paying five hundred thousand dollars just for that one little strip from West, uh, in front of HEB, West Avenue, to Lock Hill Selma. So I guess a lot of people wanna keep it, or whatever they decide, we're gonna put it up for a vote. And I think that's a good thing. I think it's a big enough issue where the people here, the residents, should make that choice. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Sylvia. Uh, folks, I wanted to point out one thing. The item on the agenda tonight is, uh, we're talking about the, bringing this thing to the ballot. So since there's only one, two, three, four, five, we'll go ahead and give a little leeway on this, uh, as, as far as opinions are concerned. But this is an item that we're, uh, probably need to stick to the, to the item on the agenda. And, uh, if, uh, so with that, we're gonna move forward with Mr. George Booth. Thank you. Um, on Gladiola Lane, uh, William Dooling.
Afternoon, Brother William Dooling, two oh, two zero one Gladiola Lane. I'm a little under the weather, but, um, the issue of the election, I, I just, I think that just a point needs to be clarified, and, and none of the council members mentioned it. That this matter is already set to be on the ballot. That is, shall VIA continue? All that's being added at this meeting is the question of the replacement of the tax-collecting authority and purpose for the tax and so on, should VIA be discontinued? So I just, I mean, if, if what's proposed passes, well, of course, then that's what goes on the ballot. But if it doesn't pass, the issue of VIA continuing or discontinuing is still on the ballot for this May. Am I correct? That, that's my only question.
I, that's the way I understand it. That's the way I understand it, Mr. Bren, uh, Mr. Dooling.
Well, the, the first proposition is gonna be, is VIA continued or discontinued? That's the vote on the first proposition.
Now, that wasn't my question. My question was, nine months ago, or eight months ago, whenever it was, Mr. Paul made the motion, it passed to put it on the ballot for this May. It's already been done.
Well, they may have, uh, discussed that and passed a motion, but the, the election was never officially called until tonight. This is the official calling of the election.
Were you talking about the second part of that, and whether it'd be a moot, moot point after, uh, if, if VIA won or lost?
No. I, I remember being here when Mr. Paul made the motion to, to put this on...
Yeah, this is, this is basically, uh, housekeeping.
And, and, and that was my only question, that if, if this motion should not pass, it's my understanding that this was put on the ballot a long, long time ago.
No, it wasn't.
Okay. Well, it will be tonight. One way or another.
Can we clarify that?
What he was saying is...
Until we send it in, it's not on the ballot.
That's correct. That's exactly correct. Right, Mr. Brennan? That's what I thought.
But this is an ordinance, and that wasn't. And when you pass an ordinance, it's not called housekeeping. We're, we're passing an ordinance to put it on the ballot.
Thank you, Leslie, for that point. Okay, Mr. Davis, did you have any comments? Yeah. They're getting some exercise.
I get plenty of exercise. Tom Davis, one hundred Wickford Way. I highly support, uh, what Mr. Brennan said about why, uh, this is written into state law, that you do it in the affirmative. On the ballot, it should say that you support the continuation of VIA in the city of Castle Hills, blah, blah, blah. If you put discontinue, then a person that is in favor of keeping VIA has to vote no. That's very confusing because it's a double negative. So if you put something like, um, "I wish to discontinue, uh, this relationship," yes or no? Uh, yes, I want to discontinue, but no, I want to keep it. So people will see VIA, discontinue, and they don't know whether to vote yes or no. So it should be written in the affirmative, as the state says, to continue the relationship with VIA. And then the second one's a different one. So I'm only simply saying that because by adding discontinue, I think it's a purposeful way of confusing the public.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. (laugh) I love these executive meetings. Uh, sure, come on up, Tom.
Tom Richenberger, three oh one Lock Haven. Good evening. So, the discussion is to clarify, I was at the same town hall meeting when, um, Frank Paul talked about, let's move this motion to a vote in May. That's what I understood. Everybody understands that, right? But tonight, we're voting, or you guys are gonna vote to put it actually on a ballot, even though we, because the problem back in May, or back in September, or whenever it was, was we had bad information. Guys who were for VIA said this dollar amount, guys against it was that. So Frank was, so you know what, let's get our stuff together and let's move it to a May vote. So tonight, make sure I understand, you guys are saying we're going to put this on the ballot because it wasn't on the ballot from that council meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then all, then all my, uh, Mr. Methodical here is, I have, the information I have on, for the council meeting coming up, or the town hall meeting is, is what are the facts? Now, January, we had the reporter come out, and Frank did a nice article on, um, where, where we're continuing and discontinuing. But we don't have numbers necessarily from VIA. Will we get that in that town hall meeting of all the data from VIA, good numbers, and what the real deal is? Instead of, you know, no, no disrespect for us, because I'd sit down there at the bus stop, too, and try to watch people, but I don't have time to do it either. But we'd like to know what the real numbers is. I'm sure they're technical enough to say, hey, here's what we provide for your city.
There's no doubt in my mind, Tom, that at that town hall meeting, we'll probably know everything there is to know about the bus service and then some.
All right, thanks. Thanks, counsel.
I'll see to it. Thank you. Okay. With that said, uh, everyone who signed up, we're gonna do a little leniency here. And is there anybody who'd like to say something who isn't signed up? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, that's fine. That's why we went back around.
Amy McLennan, one oh five Villa Anne Street. Um, no sense in debating pros and cons for this. I just want to, um, reiterate what the other residents have asked for in the town hall meeting. I did attend the last town hall meeting with VIA, and they were, I was extremely disappointed with their lack of preparedness. I like options for transportation, and so I'd like to know from them, you know, bus stop count and ridership, and plans for perhaps making themselves a little bit more efficient and, um, useful to even other residents. So if, to the extent that the council and mayor and, uh, city manager and whoever can, can ensure that they bring numbers, they were just, they had nothing. They were just kind of speaking out of the ether, um, at the last meeting. I mean, it was, I was terribly disappointed with Mr. Gonzalez's, um, presentation. And I, I know him from being a judge and other things, that I expected him to be more prepared. So, um, as a resident, I would like that information just to, um, you know, to have.
We'll go a step further than that, Amy. I'll see that Mr., uh, Arnt gets a copy of, uh, the, uh, this tape, okay? And, and actually, uh, not only hear it from us, but hear it from you also. That this is what we'd like to see, and also Mr. Reichenberger. And I will follow up with an email to him to be sure that he watches it.
Sounds good. Could you, um, as part of that, make sure, because I know there's a lot of discussion of the perimeter streets. Our Villa Anne is right up against Blanco, and so I'm very familiar with the ridership of people that come on and off of the bus stop right there at Castle Hills and Blanco. And it's a, you know, there's never a horde of people there, but there are people there constantly throughout the day. And so I would be curious even, because I know there's discussion about perimeter use versus through the city use of, of bus stops. And I think it would be important to know, you know, if the perimeter routes have a lot more ridership versus inside the city, I, I don't...
Fair enough.
Whatever that's worth.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else? All right. I think this is important enough, take a roll call vote, and we're gonna do something that we don't do very often, that start on the right side. So we have a motion on the table by Mr., uh, Daggett. A second by Mr. Paul on the motion to bring this to an election on item three of the agenda. Mr. Gregory, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Paul? Mr. Squire?
Aye.
Mr. Daggett?
Aye.
Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you, counsel. I appreciate that. And since we've already done citizens to be heard, I guess the last item is, uh, to adjourn. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Paul, second. Thank you, Mr. Daggett. With that said, we will now adjourn at six oh nine. Thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am.